At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Hudak?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon? Commissioner Leon? You're on mute.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Here.
Commissioner Staton? Mr. Staton?
Here.
And Vice Chair Williams?
Here. Okay. Clerk of the Board, would you please lead us in the prayer and the salute to the flag?
Yes, and just for the record, there were seven commissioners present.
Thank you.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her of charity, to give the entire family of nations to agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk of the Board, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Certainly. The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to another remote meeting by the Union County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Williams, and I am the Vice Chair of the Board, and I am standing in for Chairman Mirabella tonight. Thank you all again for joining us. I want to start off by recognizing First Lady Tammy Murphy, who visited the FEMA vaccination site on Pearl Street in Elizabeth earlier this week. The county has been assisting in this operation as part of our efforts to help ensure that eligible residents have equal access to a COVID-19 vaccine. I'd like to thank First Lady Tammy Murphy and, of course, her husband Governor Phil Murphy for their support. We are continuing to distribute vaccines throughout the Union County, through the Union County Vaccine Center at Kane University, and we encourage everyone to get vaccinated as soon as they are eligible and vaccines are available. We add new appointments as soon as supplies come in, so please keep checking the Vaccine Center scheduling page at ucnjvaccine.org for the latest updates. For those without access to the website, they can be scheduled through the county's call center. And meanwhile, let's continue to protect each other and to observe the safety guidelines, meaning wear a mask, keep your distance, and avoid large gatherings. Turning now to seasonal events. To lead off Women's History Month, which is the month of March, we're now accepting nominations for the Union County Tribute to She-Rose Awards. These awards will recognize women who have demonstrated exceptional leadership, pride, and commitment to their communities during the COVID-19 pandemic. The deadline for nominations is Wednesday, March 31st, so please don't delay. You can get all the details online through the Union County Office on Women at ucnj.org/women, plural, women, or call the office at 908-527-4216. Also on Wednesday, March 10th, we're kicking off the 2021 schedule for our Queer Empowerment Hour, a bi-weekly virtual gathering that centers on LGBTQ+ issues in Union County and beyond. For all the details and to get the Zoom link, please visit the Union County Office of LGBTQ Affairs online at ucnj.org/lgbtq or call 908-527-4742. And then finally, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, on Saturday, March 20th, we're bringing the U2 Tribute Band to our series of free drive-in concerts. We're looking forward to a great show, which will include Irish music in general, the music of U2, and dance. You can visit our registration page at ucnj.org/reserve beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, March 12th, that's one week from today, to reserve your spot. So now we will turn to tonight's meeting, and we will approve the communications during tonight's regular meeting following this agenda meeting. So I want to start off by asking County Clerk Rajapi to present her resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm pleased to have two resolutions this evening. The first is amending an IBM Support Maintenance Contract from December 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021. The second resolution is an amendment to our contract with Royal Printing in the amount not to exceed, well, the amendment is $104,000 for 80. And this is in the event that we have an all-vote-by-mail election for the primary and November election, we will have to buy additional envelopes. $16,000 of this amount we will have to use in any case because the state has mandated new vote-by-mail language for the applications, and that's it.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, thank you, Madam County Clerk. And you're welcome. We'll move on to the Board of Elections with Administrator Nicole DiRado.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the Board. The Union County Election Board has two resolutions on for your consideration this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board on these two resolutions? Okay. Thank you very much, Director DiRado. Okay. Now we'll move on to the Department of Economic Development with Amy Wagner, our Deputy County Manager. Director Wagner?
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has two resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do I see any questions from colleagues on these resolutions? Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy County Manager. Let's see. So now we'll move on to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management with Director Joe Graziano.
Good evening, Madam Chair. The Department has four resolutions on tonight for your consideration. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board on these four resolutions? On any of these four resolutions or comments? Okay. Looks like there are no questions, so thank you, Director Graziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Now we come to the Department of Finance, Director Debbie Taylor.
Good evening, Chairwoman and members of the Board of County Commissioners. The Department of Finance has four resolutions on for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions on these four resolutions from the Board? I'm just looking for hands, and okay, it looks like there are no questions. Thank you very much, Director Taylor.
Thank you.
Next, we come to the Department of Human Services, Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has three resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Let's see. I see that we have a question from Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Director, for number one, have we identified additional motels that we will be adding, or is that just a plan to identify additional?
Yes, Commissioner, we have identified seven additional hotels throughout Union County. They are Ramada Inn, it's out of county, they're taking our, I would say COVID-positive that we have to, you know, get into isolation, so we have that. Travelodge, La Marge Motel in Avonel, Roadway Inn in Belleville, Howard Johnson in Clifton, the Clifton Manor Hotel on Route 22 in Union, and the Hampton Inn in Linden. So those are the new seven that we are adding to the list.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Director, number three, I believe was one of Chairman Mirabella's initiatives. If you can just elaborate on that, please.
Be glad to, Commissioner. This is exciting. It is a part of the chairman's Rising campaign. So we are trying to get our shower and laundry, mobile shower throughout the county. So this is for our homeless and individuals in need of something called a fresh start. So to go in a place that they could take their shower, wash their clothes, and really get some wraparound services as needed so that we can provide them resources throughout the county. We're looking to serve throughout Union County, Elizabeth Plainfield. On request, we will go throughout the county where the homeless population is to serve. So we're happy that this program is coming online, and we have selected a vendor to build out the trailer to all the specifics needed.
So I just want to thank you, Director, and your entire team in working this chairman's initiative. We know it's definitely going to be of great use to the different communities throughout Union County, making sure that, you said before, providing a fresh start. So definitely look forward to this to being rolled out. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Are there any other comments or questions before we move forward? Okay, seeing none, let us move on now to the Department of Parks and Recreation with Director Ron Zubor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Department of Parks and Recreation has four items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions for this? I actually have one question about number two. The, let's see, renovation at the Red Knot. Can you just elaborate a little bit, please, Ron?
Yes, I believe that the county manager wanted to take this one if it was asked.
Oh, okay. County Manager, welcome.
Hi, Chair, thank you. Yeah, we're using this downtime because Red Knot is closed due to COVID. You know, usually winter is pretty slow to begin with, but now with COVID and indoor capacity limits, we decided to just keep it closed. Then we're trying to use this time to look at some renovations to make the place a little more open, a little more bright, a little more inviting. So we're trying to use our downtime wisely.
Agreed. Brightness is a good thing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments on the other resolutions before we move forward? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Director Zubor.
Thank you.
And you're welcome, and we'll move on to the Department of Public Safety and Andrew Moran, Director.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board. Department of Public Safety has eight resolutions for your consideration, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's see. Are there any questions or comments for public safety? Let's see, just double-checking. I see none, so thank you very much, Director Moran. And now, let's see, where are we? Okay. Let's move on, and we now have, we now come to Commissioner-sponsored resolutions, and I would ask if there are any additional resolutions to be added? Seeing none. Okay. I will now call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Jimmy, is it possible for us to move directly into our next meeting, into the regular meeting?
Sure, yes, we're adjourned, and I can move directly into the regular meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so let's do that. Just give me one second to get myself set here with the other. Okay. Okay, so at this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Hudak? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hudak? I see he's on.
Here, here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Here.
Commissioner Staton?
Here.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have seven commissioners present for tonight's meeting, regular meeting?
Thank you. Okay. Clerk of the Board, if you would please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Certainly. Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Clerk. Would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Certainly. Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you, Jim. May I now have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Granados, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yeah.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, that is seven votes in the affirmative for the approval of the communications.
Thank you so much. So now at this time, I would like to call County Manager Ed Oatman to introduce his 2021 executive budget.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the Board. Commissioners, tonight I presented the 2021 executive budget for your review. Given these unprecedented times and the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and every aspect of our lives, I'm announcing a 0% increase in Union County's 2021 budget for the second year in a row. This budget continues to fund our response to the pandemic, maintain essential services, including a safety net for those in need, and holds the bottom line. We are also maintaining our credit rating, which is the highest one attainable. Some essential services that are funded include the county's vaccination centers at Kane University and Plainfield, the COVID-19 drive-through test center at Kane University, our mobile unit which operates throughout Union County, our weekly food distributions which have provided more than 2 million meals to those in need, Union County's mask distribution to all of our municipalities, and various human service programs that support childcare, seniors, working families, and those in need. This budget also funds the chairman's Union County Rising initiatives for 2021, which include public safety improvements, support for our businesses, our LGBTQ community, upgrades to our parks and recreation facilities, and support for recreational programming. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for their vision and support, and our county team of directors for their partnership and assistance. I'd also like to thank our county employees, many of whom have put in extra hours or adjusted their schedules to assist in our food drives and our vaccination and test center operations. Extraordinary times that made extraordinary measures, and we cannot accomplish all this without the hard work of many. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. So we'll begin with, we have an ordinance for introduction on first reading. Clerk of the Board, would you please read the ordinance by title?
Certainly, Chair. Orance Number 825-2021. Bond Ordinance to amend Section 4N of the Bond Ordinance, Ordinance Number 808-2019, entitled, "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery, New Additional Furnishings, New Communication and Signal Systems Equipment, New Information Technology and Telecommunications Equipment, and New Automated Vehicles Including Original Apparatus and Equipment in, by, and for the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $48,560,397 to pay the cost thereof to appropriate state grants, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted July 25, 2019."
Thank you, Jim. At this time, I will ask Commissioner Hudak to move the ordinance. You're on mute.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Vice Chair. Bear with me for one second. Okay, I move ordinance 825-2021 for first reading, and authorize clerk of the Board to advertise the same in accordance with the law. The public hearing will be scheduled to be held on March 25, 2021.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Commissioner Hudak, with a second by Commissioner Granados. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on an ordinance number 825?
Thank you so much. May I now have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comments on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comments on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the county as one public comment session?
So moved, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second?
Backing.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Kowalski and seconded by Commissioner Leon. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair, and for, let the record reflect, Commissioner Garrettson has joined the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson, a vote to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative to suspend the rules?
Thank you so much. The meeting is now open to anyone wishing to speak on resolutions being offered for adoption or on any matter. I will start by opening the meeting up to those who are joining us on our Zoom webinar. Please note that a five-minute timer will display on our live stream indicating green. At the four-minute mark, the timer display will change to yellow, and then it will change to red at the five-minute mark. So Clerk of the Board, would you please call on the names in the queue?
Yes, Chair, the first individual in our queue is Mr. Bruce Patterson of Garwood.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Good evening, Chair Pro Tem Williams. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner Board, this is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Resolution 185, this is giving Vigilant Systems of California $38,000 of UASI grant funds for an automatic license plate reader. I don't see a reason why you should have one. Why would the county need a license plate reader? Resolution 187, this is giving $110,000 of UASI grant funds to Muni Emergency Services of Pennsauken for providing specialized rope rescue equipment. I'll tell you, that's one expensive length of rope, is it not? No pun intended. Resolution 189, this is allowing our Union County Police to participate in obtaining Department of Defense equipment. Why can't we get a lot of this equipment we are buying from the DOD, like that length of rope, and et cetera, or whatever else is buried in that $48 million you plan to borrow next meeting? Resolution 190, that's giving $200,000 to Lera Gabilisco Funeral Home in Raway for one year of livery services. The $200,000 sounds very excessive. What's the purpose of this? And how is this $200,000 in non-competitive contract determined? Resolution 192, this is approving subordinated revenue bonds for the Aries Linden Project. This is involving the $50 million bonding, I guess, from the UCIA for the Linden Biosolids Plant. Why is this not some kind of bond ordinance for the county if it is debt being taken on by the county? And who is guaranteeing this debt? Resolution 193, why is the UCA taking over the construction of the privately-owned Linden Biosolids Plant? What happened to Riggs Distler, the general contractors from Cherry Hill? I have a feeling that thanks to the wasted incompetence found at the UCIA, this will probably turn into being another boondoggle. I see they tossed out ex-freeholder Sullivan from director of the UCIA, so I guess that's a good first step. I really need answers on this. Resolution 196, this is giving $106,000 to T&amp;M Associates for, quote, "Review existing documentation and prepare a plan for site remediation at the Westfield County facility." This site was remediated and then paved over 10 years ago. However, this usually makes sense when one sees that T&amp;M had donated $94,000 to the Commissioners and their cronies in four years. This really needs some clarification to avoid the appearance that it's just wasting our money. Resolution 200, this is giving your political donation buddy, Net Architects, who had donated $96,000 in four years to yours and your crony campaigns, a sum of $58,000 to provide architectural services for renovation of Red Knot Restaurant. Now, I heard County Manager Oatman explain what it is, but what exactly is the problem with the restaurant? I mean, it's only been open seven years, and isn't the tenant responsible for tenant sit-out? Resolution 204, this resolution wording is totally incomprehensible when you read it and really needs some clarification from someone because there's so many numbers in it, it doesn't make sense. But a question arises that it is amending last year's reso number 899, which was a not-to-exceed reso for 2.9 million, to your buddy Royal Printing. Are you telling the public that you already spent the 2.9 million and need another amendment to up it to 3.1 million? If not, why is this not buried in the $2.9 million? Resolution 207 and 208, our two resolutions giving JCT Communications of Springfield a total of $1.5 million for network and telephone systems for two years. Why isn't this buried in the $48 million you plan to borrow and approve next meeting? As a general comment, I'll tell you, the Union County pigpen is starting to get a little more crowded now that you are sneaking tens of thousands of dollars to your finance director's pocket and hundreds of thousands of dollars in federal cares monies to her husband's law firm. This should cover the mortgage taxes this year on that $1.1 million house they moved into last year. Crossing the razor this year, and it looks like you bought yourself some good creative accounting on the county budget. Trust in the raise this year, and it looks like you bought yourself some good creative accounting on the county budget. And last comment is that Commissioner Staton looks like she's losing the ballot line because she did not agree with the county political boss, Senator Scutari. She's now being tossed aside like freeholders Jala, MAP, and others in the past. We're not being in lockstep with the boss. Here in Union County, you don't do the people's business, you are expected to do the boss's business. You do his business, and you get a ticket to the Union County pigpen.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Your time is up. Thank you. Before we get into any other additional comments, I would like to have the directors respond to the resolutions that Mr. Patterson brought up. So Director Moran, can you provide more clarification on resos 185, 187, 189, and 190?
Certainly, Chair. 185 about the license plate readers, these, over the past couple of years, have become an integral part of law enforcement and a real valuable tool to solve crimes. It's more than just a license plate reader. This captures a license plate and then checks it against both state and federal criminal databases, and will alert police when there's a stolen car, when there's a car that was involved in a felony, when there's one in person in the area. So they're a real valuable tool. They can run much more license plates than a police officer can do in his car. Number 187, obviously, this is not all rope. About $15,000 of it is rope, but it's also different-sized harnesses and rescue equipment for our urban search and rescue teams, made up of seven different departments. So each department has the same equipment, so it's just not, just not rope. 189 is the military surplus program, and we do take full advantage of this. Anybody that's been through the testing center at Kane University, those 10 set we got a couple of months ago, are all army surplus, the heaters that go with them are army surplus. It saved the county tens of thousands of dollars by being in this program. In addition to that, we've gotten vehicles, computers, computer servers, night vision goggles, quite an array of equipment. 190, it is a lot for livery services, so also body storage. Unfortunately, it's a consequence of COVID. Our medical examiner's office had over 500 case increase over the previous year. And during the height of the pandemic, body storage was a real challenge within the county. And having this resource right in railway was valuable to public safety. So it is high. We usually budget around 150 for this, but not knowing what's going to come into 2021, we just wanted to put some cushion in there in case we needed this service. But it's a not-to-exceed, so hopefully we'll exceed that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Moran. There were also two resolutions that I would ask Director Taylor to provide some clarification for 192 and 193?
Absolutely, through you, Chairwoman. First and foremost, the resolutions that you mentioned speak to Aries Linden Project, authorized by the UCIA in October of 2019, and the amount of $15, $50 million. The owners of the project came back to the UCIA late last year and identified that with the adverse effects of COVID-19, the schedule as well as the costs were increased to this project. It's important to know that these are nonrecourse tax-exempt bonds, which essentially mean that we have, we being the county and the UCIA, have no legal obligation to repay the debt associated with this project. However, there is a need under Section 56, this, under the Improvement Authority law, that the county has to consent to the project in order for the project to go forth, hence the resolution that we have before you. Also, the TEPRA Resolution under the IRS Revenue Code, the county needs to approve projects that are repaid by private parties. So both resolutions, no obligation, financial obligation of the county to repay or taxpayers. These are all the obligations of revenues that are generated from the project and our subordinated debt that the bondholders have an obligation to pay in the event that the project does not go forth. There's no obligation for the county.
Thank you so much, Director Taylor. Director Graziano, Resolution 196, there was a question about that one?
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. This is for T&amp;M Associates. They're the LSRP for that site. If you remember, this site's a contaminated site. There's contaminated groundwater on the site. There are approximately 10 to 15 testing wells on the site. So the site's not going to be damaged at all. This is just an ongoing thing. This was an RFP process. T&amp;M was the incumbent, so I expected them to be the least expensive since they have all the information on the site. It's their LSRP, and if you remember, the LSRP usually follows the site there. There's multiple groundwater testing that has to be done on the site. There's, and everything's done as per DEP regulations and guidelines. So this site has been, has been under this type of contamination for at least, I mean, the last 15 years since I've been here, and it's, you know, it's going to continue for, I don't know how many years, until the site is non-contaminated, which could probably be, I have no idea, 50 years down the road. So this is going to have to continue on this site and then every other site that we have that has an LSRP and any sort of contamination wells that are there for testing.
Thank you very much, Director Graziano. Director Zubor, Resolution 200, I know that the county manager explained that there would be some renovations to the Red Knot. If you had anything to add, feel free to, or county manager, if you want to provide any further clarification, please, please do so.
I can, Vice Chair, thank you. No, it is not the tenant's responsibility. It is our building. We own it. So all improvements have to be made by us, much like the golf course. Kemper Sports runs it. But if we do changes or improvements, it's our building, our facility, our improvements.
Got it. Thank you so much, County Manager. Let's see, Resolution 204, County Clerk Rajapi, would you please provide a little bit more clarification on that?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I'm happy to. The change amendment to the Royal Printing contract includes a mandated cost of $16,000. The state has changed the language on the mail-in voter applications. So we are responsible for changing that. That cost is $16,000. The balance of it, the $89,000, is in the event that we will have an all-vote-by-mail election in the primary in November. The governor has not called it yet. If he should, I will need approximately $90,000 to print 127,000 bilingual ballots. And I'd like to add that the contract is really, when you break it down, it comes down to about $8.90 per voter in Union County. For two elections, I have 680,000 ballots. Of those, there are 60 to 80 different versions of the ballot. They are printed in two languages. So basically, I think $8.90 for each voter is really a bargain.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and appreciate the clarification. And then finally, it looks like we had two questions for Deputy County Manager Wagner, resos 207 and 208?
Yes, through you, Chair. These two resolutions provide for our day-to-day needs for telephone repairs, cabling, security cameras in our over 150 buildings that we have people occupying. It also allows us to offer a lower hourly rate for labor. The state contract rate is $175 an hour. This allows for 140 and 135, depending on which contract, that is allowed now to be offered through a shared service with 118 other governmental agencies throughout the county. They can use that pricing on our co-op. So it saves the whole state money.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy County Manager. Let's see. Oh, Clerk of the Board, can you confirm whether there are any other members of the public joining us on our Zoom meeting?
Madam Chair, yes, there is. The next individual in our queue is an Andrea Crowley Hughes.
Okay. Ms. Crowley Hughes?
Hi, I don't have any questions, though. I'm just here covering the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
The next individual, Madam Chair, is Ann Decamp.
Okay, Ms. Decamp?
Hi. Neil Williams and Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity. Oh, wait. Okay. Sorry, I have to stop, start the video. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and other Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity for public input on the upcoming master plan for Union County Parks. The pandemic has taught us how critical public lands and open spaces are, especially when we cannot gather indoors. We have noticed so many more families hiking in the Watchung Reservation, and that's a real positive during this time. I want to address a few areas of importance to our largest open space, the Watchung Reservation. I believe that we must do more to protect and maintain the so-called lungs of Union County as a green space and passive recreation environment. The master plan should have an intense invasive species eradication program. Watchung Reservation, our crown jewel, is overrun with invasive species. They are crowding out native species and provide no sustenance for wildlife. In the early spring, before other plants emerge, the reservation is carpeted with tick harboring Japanese barberry. Later in the year, we see Japanese knotweed advancing evermore, year after year. We must remediate this problem. I was really heartened to know that the county recently hired two full-time employees to help maintain the reservation and the other parks. The Rain Garden Project with Rutgers is a wonderful example of a practical solution and an educational project. But we need many more resources to improve the trails in the reservation. And while we treasure them, a few volunteers is barely making a dent. One final topic is my strong support for the extension of the East Coast Greenway along the Raritan Valley rail line right of way. This is a total win for the county, and we should all applaud this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Decamp. Thank you very much. Clerk, do we have any other members of the public joining us in this Zoom meeting?
Yes, we do. Madam Chair, the next individual would be Anthony Thomas.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas, the floor is yours? I'm not seeing...
Chair, he's joining via video.
Okay. Okay.
I don't, I don't see him on at this point.
Okay.
I can move on.
We sent a unmute request. You have to accept the unmute request, Mr. Thomas.
Hold on.
You should be sending a message saying that the host is asking you to unmute.
Okay, hold on. I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Let me, let me see. I don't see that, I don't see that, that window here.
Oh, that was for the member of the public. Now you...
Oh, I thought you were talking to me. Yeah, I didn't see, think.
Chair, i-if I may, it looks as though they're... Robert, is the individual in, has the individual been moved over? Yes.
They have.
Analyst.
They have, and I've sent in unmute request and a start video request.
Correct. All right, so we're just in a holding pattern, Vice Chair.
Okay.
He has left the meeting.
Okay. Perhaps he will sign back on before we, before we move on.
Jim, are there... We do have an additional, one last individual in our queue by the name of George Cook from Hillside.
Okay. Mr. Cook, you may begin.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I want to thank you for everything you've done as far as getting vaccinations for the residents of Union County. But there are a few people who are hesitant to get it because they want the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And I was just wondering, when would that begin, and when would you be able to start getting that out to residents?
Okay. Is that your, is that your only?
This is the only comment, yes. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So can we have, perhaps, County Manager, would you be able to respond to Mr. Cook's question?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, as everybody knows, was just recently approved, and it's going to be rolling out into the states shortly. Fortunately, like the other two vaccines, it's going to take a little while to get going. The state told us there's going to be some coming in this week, but not, do not expect another delivery for another three weeks, unfortunately. But once it gets into the state and gets out there, we are going to use that to set up mobile clinics throughout the county. So we will come into each town with some vaccine and try to get it out that way in addition to our operation at Kane and also in Plainfield. Fortunately, I don't have exact numbers yet or timeline, but as they say, it's coming.
Thank you very much, County Manager. I hope that, that, that answers your question, Mr. Cook. And I would just add that according to the CDC and all the guidance we've received, it, it's important that individuals take the vaccine that is available, even as we await more vaccines and await the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine as, as you are eligible, according to the current guidance. Please, we encourage you to take the vaccine. Okay? Thank you. Clerk, is, are there any other members of the public joining? Did Mr. Thomas rejoin, or?
Unfortunately, Mr. Thomas has not rejoined this, this meeting. But however, I do have one email that I received requesting for it to be read into the record. So I can read that and then circle back to see if Mr. Thomas joins.
Okay, yes, please read that email comment into the record.
I received an email by Maria Echeverria on Wednesday, March 3, at 4:53. And the email is read as follows. "My name is Maria Echeverria, and I'm from Elizabeth, New Jersey. I have lots of questions regarding 825-2021. Are these small cell technologies or small cell sites or 5G? Show me the science that supports using these technologies on a grand scale, as these technologies are hazardous. Also, over $48 million for this. Please get back to me regarding all my questions I've had these past months, as I don't get any response." Thank you, Maria Echeverria.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk. With regard to not receiving a, any response, I'm not sure. I have not gotten anything addressed to me by Mrs., Ms. Echeverria.
Chair, if I may, I mean, I know I have had emails, correspondence back and forth with Maria. I will follow up with this email to find out exactly what questions she did not receive answers to and try to work to the best of my abilities to get her the information she's looking for.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Are there any other emails or comments?
I received no other emails, and at this point, Chair, Mr. Thomas has not rejoined the meeting, so we are done with the public comment.
Okay, thank you. So noting that there are no other comments, I will formally close this portion of the meeting, and I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2021-180 through 2021-217.
The move. Second.
Okay, so we have the motion made by Commissioner Kowalski and seconded by Commissioner Hudak. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Prior to the roll call, I just want to make note for the record that Commissioner Leon had to be excused for the remaining portion of the regular meeting. meeting.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Commissioner Staton?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven Commissioners, uh, voting in the affirmative on the resolutions?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, at this point, I would ask for Commissioner reports or comments. And please just raise your hand so I can see you, all these screens up, um, or actually, why don't I just go in the order as Chairman Mirabella does? Uh, Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, just want to recognize this week is Read Across America Week, and I know a lot of our Commissioners are joining different classrooms around the county and reading to students, and even though this year it's a little different with it being on Zoom, uh, we just want to continue to always say, you know, making sure that reading is fundamental tool in our education, and by reading leads you to be whatever you want to be when you get older, so happy Read Across America Week to all our Union County, uh, students. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Um, I would like to remind everyone that we are in March, which is Women's History Month, so, uh, greetings to all of our women and, uh, to my, my colleagues on the, on the, uh, board here, as well as all of the women in government and women involved in our Union County community. We are offering some programs in honor of Women's History Month, so I would ask that you check our website, ucnj.org, um, they're coming up a little bit later in the month. And, uh, just, uh, reiterate, uh, hope everyone continues to mask up and stay safe. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Hudak?
Um, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, just again, want to, you know, our, our month-to-month continued praise of all of our staff who are maintaining the testing sites and the vaccine sites, and I know there's going to be more supply on the way as, as County Manager Oben said, and beyond that, uh, thank you, Vice Chair, that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Staton?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I too would like to wish everyone a happy, um, Women's History Month, and I think my colleagues have covered everything else, so I'll just bank the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Garrettson?
It was great, thank you, Vice Chair, it was great to be with colleagues today for Women's History Month. We, um, supported the Division of, um, Human Services and were able to stand with women leaders, so it was lovely to be with colleagues and the women of the board, so thank you, we hope that you see that, um, that, that kind of exciting image coming forth today. Um, but with that, I have no other comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garrettson. Uh, Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Thank you, Vice Chair, uh, I'm going to bank my comments this evening, thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I just have a couple of comments to make, and one is, um, to really, uh, praise my colleagues for an outstanding program of Black History Month events, um, that, um, especially Commissioner Garrettson and Commissioner Staton, uh, really kind of pulled together with the, uh, able assistance of our, uh, Clerk of the Board, uh, James Piletiri, and with the, uh, technical assistance of, of Robert Cherkowski, and, um, it was a wonderful month of events, uh, virtual or not, we've gotten great feedback about that, and, um, I look forward to some additional great events for Women's History Month. Um, and I just want to address, um, my, my utmost and deepest respect for all of my colleagues as well as all of the staff here, uh, who works for the county, and it is, it really has been an honor, um, to stand in for Chairman Mirabella to, to lead this meeting, and I really do thank you all. Um, I will bank my, uh, additional comments as well for another meeting, but I want to just thank everyone, uh, for your confidence in me. Um, I have great confidence in all of you as well. Um, so with that, I would ask, uh, for a motion to adjourn this meeting?
The move.
Uh, that's moved by Commissioner Staton, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Hudak. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you all very much, we are adjourned. Good night.
Great job, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.